Good morning. I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Bat.
Here.
Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Smith to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's compose our heart with prayer. But we come to you once again in the humblest way we know how. We come with bow heads and humble hearts, thanking you for your goodness and your mercy. Once again, we thank you for watching over us during the storm and thank you that there were no fatalities during the storm. We thank you for all our first responders, the Mayor's Office, the council, and all those involved. And God, we even pray for those who are still without power, still in need even now. We ask for your leading and your guiding and let's allow your Holy Spirit to continue to conduct this meeting through us, God, and help us to remember our oath and that we're here to serve the constituents of our city. So we lift this meeting up before you now. We thank you. Everything will be done decently and in order. We give you every bit of the praise and the glory and the honor. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Education Recreation Committee Work Session and City Council Meeting held on June 27th.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of June 23rd through June 29th.
So moved.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. I don't believe we have any today. Item 8 is unfinished business. 8A is an ordinance amending City Code Section 90-92 regarding begging or soliciting alms. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It repeals the existing code section and replaces it with language addressing panhandling, begging, and solicitations. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Abstention.
We have one abstention. Motion carries to adopt.
Item 9 is a resolution, amending resolution number R-244-21, authorizing lease agreement with Jerry, Pate, Turf &amp; Irrigation through State of Alabama Omnia Partners Public Sector Purchasing Cooperative. This is for equipment to be used at the Gadsden Sports Park and there will be five payments of $38,167.40 each. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I just want to make it clear. We had originally sourced several pieces of equipment for, to maintain the new Gadsden Sports Park, the soccer fields and the baseball fields, lawn motors, things like that. And I think after some review, it was determined that we could do that with, with fewer pieces of equipment than we initially intended or identified. So I think the original lease amount was somewhere a little over $60,000 a year. And after the amendments to this agreement, that payment, as you said, will now be $38,000 a year. So it's actually reducing the amount of the payment each year for the lease of that equipment.
Thanks, I appreciate that. All right.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution, authorizing agreement with CDG Incorporated. This is for engineering services related to the rehabilitation of Carolyn Lane from Rosewood Lane to Springdale Road, and the amount is $23,990. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution, authorizing agreement with CDG Incorporated. This is for engineering services related to construction of a new Fire Station 6 on Goldenrod Avenue, and the amount is $10,925. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have one question about this on Goldenrod. This is going to be, I know at one time we talked about total reconstruction, remodeling of Station 6. Is this still the case or this modification from that previous conversation?
So Station 6 is actually a complete tear down, demolish, and build new. No renovation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Heath. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12, first readings, ordinance, authorizing second amendment to ordinance creating entertainment district. This expands the boundary of the entertainment district on both sides of the Coussa River. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Item 13 is new business. I believe we have a few.
Yes, Mr. President, I've got a couple here. The first one is a resolution from the Community Development Department authorizing the application and acceptance of the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Fiscal Year 2023 Emergency Solutions Grant Program. This is a grant program that the Mayor's Office specifically, Ms. Moffett, is heading up with a couple of other local organizations, the Family Success Center and the Salvation Army. This is a dollar-for-dollar grant that will go to help further our efforts to address the homelessness situation here in Gadsden, specifically identifying specific causes of homelessness and, and what the, the best paths to, to solving that problem are. So this would be, this would be a dollar-for-dollar grant, again, that will be matched by those two organizations, the Family Success Center and, and the Salvation Army. So I would ask that we suspend the rules and consider this under new business today so that we can go and access these grant dollars.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, again, just, just to add a little more clarification to this, I think the total amount of this grant is $200,000. So those two agencies will put up $200,000 and then the federal government will match that. So a total of $400,000 will be spent on these efforts.
All right, thank you. All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, the other one I have is from the Legal Department. This is a resolution appointing Mr. Derek Mumert as EMA Director. And I just want to say, as someone who serves on that EMA Board and was, was part of that interview process, we were very fortunate to have several very qualified candidates. And I know that Derek is going to do a fantastic job as he's already been serving in that role as interim for quite some time over the last couple of months, I think. So we're excited to make this official. So if there's no objection, I would like to suspend the rules and consider this appointment under new business.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'll move to adopt.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 14 is department reports, committees, and boards. I believe Ms. Weddington has a report.
Hey, just wanted to give an update in Parks and Rec. I'm not sure if everybody knows, but the month of July is designated as the National Parks and Recreation Month. So it is a time for us to get out and enjoy all of our beautiful parks and everything that is offered. So I just wanted to remind everybody that on Fridays, we do have our Farmer's Market and Fish Street Market from 7:00 a.m. to noon. We'll also have the Senior Ice Cream Social and Bingo at the Downtown Civic Center this Friday from eight, or from 10:00 a.m. to noon. The Summer Concert Series will be held this Friday at the AMP starting at 9:00 p.m. Remember, Knock a Little Fall's train is only ran on Saturdays and Sundays as we are getting our new platforms put, put into place. But the park is open seven days a week and mini golf is open also seven days a week, Monday through Thursday, 11:00 a. to 7:00 p. and Friday through Sunday, 11:00 a. to 8:00 p. This Saturday, we'll host the USA Softball at the Gadsden Sports Park. Nellie Henry Lake Association will be hosting their poker run on the water. And we do have three stops in Gadsden, which will be at the Splash Pad, the pier in front of the Splash Pad, at Jack Gray Park, and at the pier in front of Buffalo Wild Wings. Registrations are open for the following. We have the girls' youth softball. Registration is up until mid-August, so sign up your teams now and we'll start play in October. We do have an adult kickball tournament on July 22nd. It's $85 per team. It's a double elimination tournament, so please sign up if you, if you want to have a little kickball fun. We have Tennis 101 out at the Tennis Complex. This is for youth and adults. We do have Adults Men and Coed Softball League starting next week. And then come out and plan to join us for the Parks and Rec Celebration on July 15th out at the Splash Pad. We'll have a fun day in the sun with water activities also. We'll have food vendors. So plan to get the kids out there. We'll have slipping slides and, and all kinds of fun water toys. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
How many people on the kickball team?
You can have up to 10, I think, on your team, but I think in the playing field, it's only nine. Yes, ma'am.
Thanks, Jen.
Great job, Jen. I don't know how you do it. Our Parks and Rec Department's unbelievable. That's just, every time you come up here and rattle off 100 things that y'all are doing. Thank you for what you do.
I agree. Thanks. Thanks very much. Mr. Mumert.
Good morning, council. First off, thank you to you guys and the mayor for your vote of confidence in me as the new EMA Director. I look forward to working with each one of you. If you do not have my contact information, I'll make sure you have it before the end of the day. I wanted to go over a couple of things. Obviously, last week, we were talking about how hot it was going to be. And as it goes true with the weather in Alabama, if you don't like it, wait five minutes and it'll change. So Saturday, we had some storms come in, and we handled that. We had some minor property damage in Hokes Bluff. And then Sunday, we had multiple properties damaged. We are still assessing and doing our preliminary damage assessments on all of these properties. If any of the citizens have property damage, please contact us. Our email is ema@cityofgadsden.com, and somebody will come out and we will get with you about the damage to your property.
Derek, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you clarify that if, if there are, if there is individual property damage, that does the EMA have resources or access to federal resources to help mitigate the cost of those repairs?
So there's multiple avenues that we can look, that we're looking into and working with the Mayor's Office about helping mitigate the cost of these repairs to people's properties, not only public or correction, not only residential but commercial as well.
Yeah.
So we're, this is a very, very long drawn-out process.
Oh, I know, and I can only, I mean, I just, I've scratched the surface of the world of EMA and the, and the, all of the regulations and bureaucracy that goes into that. I just wanted to make sure that citizens knew that if they're, if they did experience damage to their private or commercial property, that there could potentially be some financial recourse there through the EMA, correct?
Absolutely. And we'll be in contact with those that have let us know and we have come out and actually done a damage assessment, because that is the first process, that is the first step in the process, is coming out and doing a preliminary damage assessment.
Got you. Again, I just know so many citizens don't know that process and never would.
Right.
You know, it's one of those things that nobody ever really thinks about when they've experienced a, a loss like that. So that's good to know, and I'll do everything I can to, to circulate that information for the preliminary damage assessment.
Yes.
Got you.
What was that site again?
Our email is ema@cityofgadsden.com, and that's monitored 24/7. They can also, I mean, if people don't want to do that way, they can also send us a message on our Facebook page, and we can get in contact with people there as well. The Fire Department's call volume actually quadrupled during that time. Fortunately, we, we had zero fatalities, we had zero injuries as a direct relation to the storms. We did have a structure fire due to a lightning strike, and then we also had a, an abandoned building, abandoned commercial property that caught fire due to downed power lines. But Chief Reed and his men and women in the Fire Department, as always, stepped up to the plate. Chief Jaggers, thank you for your men and women of your department. Hal Matthews, Public Works, EMA, City Council, Mayor, Mayor's Office. We can't succeed if we don't mesh and work together. And I look forward to working with all of you, Mayor's Office and all the departments. I also wanted to let you know, I thought I saw Craig Scott. Made contact with Craig Friday. He called me and said, hey, we've got a woman, an elderly lady in her 90s that does not have air conditioning. He sent out a call for VOAD, and I think within an hour, I probably had 15 calls of people, VOAD members, hey, we're going to put her up in a hotel. DHR was like, hey, we're going to make contact with her, we're going to try to find family, we're going to try to find something. We actually had one of our VOAD members that donated a window air conditioning unit that day. And Chief Reed and I were talking, and, and we said, okay, well, she's in the hotel through this day. We'll get a couple of guys out there, we'll get it installed Monday in her house, get her house cooled off. They roll up at the house Monday to install the window unit, and another VOAD partner had paid one of the local air conditioning service companies to come out and actually fix her air. So VOAD works. EMA works. We all work together for the betterment of our citizens. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you, and congratulations on your new appointment.
Thank you, sir.
Look forward to working with you.
As do I. Thank you.
Any other department reports or committees or boards? All right. Item 15 is citizen requests. We have three today. First is Larry Suddles. He's coming to speak on city playgrounds and equipment. And Mr. Suddles, if you will, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please. And man, what a hats.
My name is Larry Suddles. I live at 2322 Hill Avenue. I came here to talk about the playgrounds. I noticed that the city is spending 200 and some thousand dollars over at Gadsden State. Now, there are some playgrounds in the city needs to be fixed. Knock a Little Fall and the one around here by River, those being overrun because everybody's trying to go to those, and the others are damaged real bad. Let me explain something to you. If you look at those pictures in, on there, there are some borders around there. I worked, used to work for JCC EO. We have a guideline, which is a school, and also we have to go by state rules. And the state rule is on a playground, that, that borderline is 12 inches, 12 inches high. So that means it has to be filled up to nine inches. There are pictures in there where you can see the concrete holding the, the equipment in there and stuff like that. That's unacceptable. Somebody can get hurt bad. Do the city want to pay for that? This is, this is just awful. I don't know who's over the Housing Authority. Is the city over the Housing Authority? But their playground is just as awful. One of my phones, it's malfunctioning on pictures now. That's why I gave y'all my iPad. But...
Excuse me.
The playgrounds, they, they just awful. And there's only two good ones I've seen in the whole city. Is there anything we can do about this? Some kind of resolution? I know we, we like to go to the back room and discuss this, but this is something that the city, people as a whole need to know, because they, a lot of people don't even know about the playground. A lot of them don't even go on it. But some of these people don't want their grandchildren, their parents don't want their children hurt, because when they do, they come to see the city. Why we can't fix stuff before something happen? Now, I know Jan is over there, Park and Recreation. I don't know what the maintenance requires, how often they require to go do, look, or report, or anything, but some of that stuff is dangerous. You got stakes coming out of those borders. A child could stick, cut their hand on it. There's, I mean, it really needs to be addressed by everybody as a whole. So can we please get some kind of money transferred where the city can help the Housing Authority and help Jan fix these playgrounds? That's all I ask, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Suddles. Well, I'm sure the administration is hearing your complaints, and, and we'll have discussions. I know the mayor's at a job interview right now with someone, so he's not here, but I'm sure he's listening, so I think you could probably expect a phone call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next citizen request is Fred Zachary. He's coming to, to speak on swimming pool at Carver Homes. Mr. Zachary, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Fred Zachary, Gadsden, Alabama. Thank you, sir, for this information.
Yes, sir.
I want to give you the benefit of a little information about me. I've never done this. I've sat on media board since I've been back in Gadsden, a number, when I lived away from here. I've never been disruptive. I've never cursed anybody out. I was raised well by two very intelligent people, so I know how to come to a meeting. I know how to act at a meeting. So I don't need to be re-raised by being handed a circular that indicates this is how you are supposed to behave. It's insulting. Now, let me get on to the pool situation. I don't know what it is, but I do know that swimming pools have been, have been in, in the, the composition of conflict down through the years for a number of reasons, race being one of them. I'm not saying that's what's happening in Gadsden now, but I do know that's what happened when all the swimming pools were filled in, and the only one left was the one at, at Carley Homes in Sixth Street. That was the only swimming pool that black kids had to swim in for a number of years. It is unconscionable that there is not a swimming pool in Gadsden. They have one in Piedmont, they have one in Center, Boaz, Hokes Bluff, which a number of the people who are working on the mayor's administration come from Hokes Bluff, Talladega, Anniston, Oxford. There are swimming pools all around in smaller municipalities than Gadsden, so there must be something more involved than this than the money to, to build a pool or to fix a pool. There cannot be a reservation of Gadsden unless we consider children and young people. 27% of the folks who live in Gadsden are under 17. So if we don't consider them, I don't know why we sit around and say, oh, they don't come back, they go other places. That's because you don't think about them. We don't think about them until they are old enough to vote. 17-year-olds can't vote. What I'm here to do is to ask you, on behalf of the children, I do vote, in Gadsden, to put some swimming pools here, at least two. One won't do. If they can have a, a aquatic center in, in Anniston and other places where they have aquatics coordinators, Gadsden certainly, with all we're spending on at this point, can't put a swimming pool in this community for our children. They certainly can't swim in the river. So we need to step up to the plate, get a swimming pool here, and stop talking yakity-yak, because yakity-yak does not teach kids how to swim. A pad, a sprinkler pad is not where you learn how to swim. So let's, let's, let's get to it. If you're going to make Gadsden a first-class, nuclear, safe city, then let's build some swimming pools for our children to be a part of in the summer and in the winter. An aquatic center would be a much better, but a swimming pool would be a start. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Our last citizen request to speak is Joseph Cole. His topic is water filters for homes of the citizens of Gadsden. Mr. Cole, if you'll give us your name and address for the record, please.
Joseph Cole, Atlanta, Georgia, and Gadsden, Alabama. First of all, Mr. President, I want to thank you and the members of the council for your donation and contribution to our fun drive as far as helping the Boys and Girls Club. We did achieve our goal, and I want to thank each of you for your contribution and also for your support. Several months ago, I came before this council, and I requested that you would tell the constituents in your district to start using water filters and filters for their home. And the reason I asked that, as you very much are aware, that the city of Gadsden are not the city. The Water Board sued businesses because of the polluted river, and in a settlement, they received over 100 millions of dollars. Now, nothing has been said from that date until this day by you council members, unless you bring me up to date on it, to let your constituents know it's safer for them if they have water filters on their refrigerators or at least water filters in their home. 3340 came and did a special on this, and they got some water from the river, took it to Auburn, y'all alma mater, and they found more dangerous things in the water. Now, this is dangerous because people, they've been drinking it. This suit was about six years ago. We still have not come to any type of conclusion. There are seniors, there are citizens in this city have not heard anything about this. That's why I appealed to you then, and I'm appealing to you now, to please let your constituents know. Now, there may be, you may have constituents that have this in their home, but there are seniors and there are others who are black and white in this city, do not have these filters, and they don't even know what went on with the river. So if you would tell them, and the man at the end of the podium will use his mayor's minute and also his Facebook to let the citizens know how important this is. It's very, very important. And please, please, do not let your animosity and disdain towards me prevent you from telling these citizens what's going on. Also, the Water Board, we have two members here that's part of the Water Board. The Water Board hasn't said a word, nothing. It's, it's just silent. So all I'm asking you to do is to let the citizen know about the danger of bathing in this water from the Coussa River, because we don't, it may be three, four, or five years before a plant is built. So what are the citizens to do? At least if they have this, they will have something to go on. And finally, hopefully you, other Water Board, can help provide some, some of these filters for these people's homes. Some of these people cannot afford this. They have hundreds of millions of dollars. Help the citizens. We all here begging this morning for you and others to help our citizens, because without them, there will be no Gadsden. Thank you very much, and I hope you all have an enjoyable day.
Thank you, Mr. Cole. All right. Item 16 is remarks by mayor and council. Councilwoman Latham, we'll... Councilwoman Latham, we'll start with you.
Thank you, President Beck. Um, just want to thank those of you who are present today via, uh, social media and those who are here, those citizens who have come and spoken to us today. I just want to say thank you to, um, everyone, the mayor, um, Public Works, um, every entity that pulled together, I think the EMA director said it, and in team effort to, um, go and get us where we needed to be as a result of the storms on Sunday, and to say that it is very exciting as we move forward, uh, being proactive so that we are prepared and know what to do when these situations take place. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith, welcome back.
Um, I almost said glad to be back, but, um, I'm ready to go again. But, uh, thank you, thank you. Uh, thank you everybody for being here. Just want to first say thank you to our first responders. They did an amazing job. Can't say enough about the great work that they do and sometimes they go unnoticed. But when we have a crisis like this, especially one we don't have time to prepare for, we really get a chance to see how they work, what they do, and how they're able to network together. So again, thank you so very much. Thank the mayor's office. Thank, uh, all of our council members. We have the opportunity to network together, to communicate together in situations like this, and we were able to do that a few days ago. So just exciting to be a part of what's going on right now in our city. Just want to say also, um, to some of these issues that were just brought up, um, for the playgrounds, there is a plan underway. I saw one of the playgrounds in my district, just want you to know that. Uh, I know the one in North Gaston, there is a conversation already being had about rehabbing, revamping, and doing some things up there. You may not always hear that or see that, but behind the scenes, there are conversations going on, um, that's going to make those playgrounds better, uh, safer, more efficient. As far as the pools is concerned, when we bought the Y, uh, made a stipulation that we build a new pool. Everybody was present, every council person up here was present. They heard that conversation. That was my one stipulation. That's still an ongoing conversation today. So I just want to put this out, cause sometimes you may not know, but I think, um, I think when that time does come, that'll be at a centralized location. Uh, that's my opinion on that. That's what I'm recommending anyway. And also, as far as the filters are concerned, I've had five, five community meetings, you know how many times people have brought up filters? Zero. Not one single person has ever brought up a filter in any meetings that I had. So, you know, we've been here seven months now, but we're trying to respond to the complaints that come from our constituents. I am. And so far, I've not had anybody bring up anything about a filter. I know you guys, or if you guys on the radio mentioned District Two, so I'm addressing that. But personally, I don't have anybody that's come to me about a filter. But thank you so much for, uh, your concern and for bringing it up today. We need to hear, uh, the thing that's going on in the community that we don't hear at the meetings, but we've heard those things, we try to address them. So thank you so much, and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Avery.
Mr. President. Um, District Three, District Meeting, July the twenty-fifth, uh, or it'll be rescheduled from the third Tuesday to the fourth Tuesday, uh, which is July the twenty-fifth. The time and the location is to be announced. Um, so I'll be out of town that, that Tuesday, um, prior to that. And so I'll be rescheduling the District Three District Meeting to July the twenty-fifth. Time and location will be announced. Want to re, re, um, announce the information about the EMA storm damage. The email is ema@cityofgaston.com, um, just to, um, give a heads up to District Three members who've received damage, which was quite a few, uh, people. Um, and so for that damage assessment, if you will email ema@cityofgaston.com, uh, that'll be at least helpful to at least get the first step, uh, on the way, along with whatever else that might need to take place. District Three Community Cleanup will be July the twenty-third, three P M. to five P M. The start location will be Valley Street, and then we'll make our way, hopefully, all the way down to Twelfth Street, um, if the weather permits. Again, that is District Three Community Cleanup, July the twenty-third, three P M. to five P M. The starting location will be Valley Street. As it relates to, um, the parks, the pool, um, and the water issue, parks, um, I, I, I'm interested in the conversations as it relates to the park. Uh, are the parks, I have pictures, um, majority of the parks in District Three are damaged. However, also, uh, majority of the parks in District Three are with housing, so that gives me a little bit of homework, uh, to do as it relates to, uh, at least the parks that are in housing. There's one that is definitely city-related, and that's behind Carver, and it does need some attention to it. Um, and so I will make sure that, um, we address that properly, okay? Um, the pool situation is a, a, a ongoing, um, uh, study. There will be a meeting, uh, to be announced, uh, within the community concerning the, the pool, um, as it relates to, um, the statement of Sixth Street Pool and the, the current status of Sixth Street Pool, okay? Um, so tho, those things are in, in play. Appreciate, um, the community outcry. And then as it relates to, uh, the water issue, um, differently from District Two, District Three have heard the, at our meetings, we definitely, uh, I've invited, um, the parties to come and speak about the water issues. If I'm not mistaken, I thought we had a, um, discussion about the city possibly partnering with EMA in purchasing some, some household filters. I could be wrong, correct me if I am. Um, however, um, maybe that's something to look back into, to see if that was, um, if, if, if we can, if we agreed to that and something to do. There's a lot going on positive and a lot, uh, things that need attention. And as it relates right now, just sticking to the current situation with the previous storm. Um, ladies and gentlemen, be patient. There are some trees still down. Um, just got some more addresses to, um, Mr. Matthews today. And so if you'll just give the city at least, uh, to the end of this week or to the mid of next week, uh, to get, to catch up, um, that'd be very helpful. Um, I, I, I'll, I'll be, I'll be here this weekend with my chainsaw helping out as we did before. So just give us, just give us a little bit of time to, uh, get those trees and debris out the way and, 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 and we'll make sure that we try to do it as expeditiously as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to take a, a, a moment of personal privilege and congratulate Mr. Greg Bailey from the Gaston Times on the birth of his grandson, ten pounds, twenty-two inches. Congratulations. What's that?
Twenty-two and a half.
Twenty-two and a half. I gotcha. Well, congratulations, Mr. Bailey. I know that's an exciting time. Uh, also want to say thank you to the Patriots Association for an awesome fireworks show last night. Um, I heard a lot of really positive things and nowhere near as many of the normal negative boo-birds that, that you hear, that it wasn't long enough, or it wasn't big enough, or it was too long, or too big, or too loud. Uh, most people seem to be, it looks like we got closer than ever to hitting it right down the middle. So congratulations to them, and I appreciate them always doing that. Um, one point of clarification, too, I wanted to make about something we took action on Mr. Sudels. Thank you. Something we took action on today, um, this soliciting and, and begging, uh, resolution that we passed or amendment to the city ordinance. To be clear, the United States Supreme Court has said you have a constitutional right to beg for money, so to speak, or solicit donations. Um, so this is not intended to infringe upon that in any way. However, there are guidelines for what they refer to as aggressive soliciting or begging. And what that means is when somebody, when, if you ask somebody if, if they could spare some change, and they say, I'm sorry, no, and you keep asking them, and you keep asking them, and you follow them around the corner, or you follow them to their car, or you follow them down the street, that's considered aggressive. And then, and then there's certain places where you can't do that. For example, you can't stand beside the ATM machine over here at Regions Bank, and when people come up to take money out of their bank account, stand there and ask them for money. There's certain guidelines and things you can't do. So all this was intended to do was to make clear the difference between the constitutionally protected right to, to solicit and what's considered aggressive solicitation. So you'll see, um, there's some very clear definitions in here about you can't solicit within twenty feet, uh, from an entrance or exit of a commercially zoned property, within twenty feet in any direction of a bus or trolley stop, within twenty feet in any direction of an automated teller machine, within twenty feet of a parking lot, parking garage, or parking meter, or parking pay station that's owned and operated by the city, uh, within twenty feet of any public restroom owned and operated by a government agency. And more specifically for businesses, there's some clear guidelines in here about, um, how you can, uh, solicit in our downtown and historic districts. And I can tell you personally, I'm somebody who spends just about every day of my life at some point in downtown, there's not a day that goes by that I'm not asked, and most of the time I accept, and I'm happy to buy pizza or some chicken wings or something. But we all know, the people who spend time downtown, we all know, there's a handful of about eight or ten offenders that are aggressive, they're mean, they can intimidate people, they'll approach anybody, even families with young children, and those are the ones that we're trying to address here. I just want to make that clear. It's not a, an overall condemnation of folks who are, who are having, find themselves in a position where they have to ask for some help. I don't, I hope that's, that's clear. Um, to the, to the question about water filters, uh, Councilman Avery was correct. I did, uh, I did make the suggestion to the EMA several months ago that we look into finding some federal grant dollars to be able to potentially, uh, give out water filters. Obviously, as some of y'all may or may not know, um, we just went through a period of transition in our EMA where our longtime EMA director, um, left, and then we had an interim EMA director, and then they left, and then we had another interim EMA director who has just been today appointed as the full-time permanent director of the EMA. So I'll certainly, uh, renew that call to, to look and see if there's federal dollars that could help, um, help purchase, um, water filters for private residences. And having said that, um, as was mentioned earlier, there are two members of this council that are on the Water Works Board, so I won't speak on their behalf, I'm not one of them. But I will say, I'll just point out, every resident in the city of Gaston gets one of these every year. It's an annual water report from the city of Gaston, or the Water Works and Sewer Board. Um, it gives you very clear, uh, results on everything that's tested, all the chemicals that are tested for. But more importantly, um, just a couple of things that's included in here that I think everybody should know. Um, and the only reason I'm announcing this is because, again, it's on the report here. It says, exciting news. Gaston Water is partnering with, uh, Insight Engineering to design and build what will be the largest reverse osmosis treatment facility in the state of Alabama. Upon completion, the new treatment facility will provide our customers with the best water quality available to any residents in Alabama. We look forward to sharing more with you over, uh, our valued customers in the future. So there are some long-term plans to, to make some improvements. And the other thing I'll point out, um, there's a footnote down here that says, community participation. And I just think everybody needs to know that this is happening, cause I'll be honest with you, I didn't even know this happened until I read this. If interested, you're invited to participate in our public forum slash board meeting. We meet the third Monday of each month, beginning at four P M. in the Robert W. Eccles Junior Executive Boardroom at the Administration Building for the Water Works, which is located at five fifteen Albert Raines Boulevard. So I would encourage all citizens, I, I certainly will try to make my way over there now that I, I know that that's a possibility. So you gotta be informed if we're gonna make this city better. So I encourage as many people as possible to show up and get involved with that process. Uh, and finally, Mr. Sudels, I agree with you, we need better playgrounds, and I'll do anything I can to help make that happen.
Thank you. Councilwoman Minatra.
Um, I too just want to thank the mayor and the staff, um, for coming to the aid of all of our citizens for the storms on Sunday. Um, I personally witnessed, um, the tree in the Episcopal School Playground come down and cover Ninth Avenue at the corner of Chestnut. Um, and within an hour, um, a team for a loader truck and a bucket truck that arrived and literally went to work and in forty-five minutes had cleared Ninth and Chestnut. Um, so I thought they did a remarkable job, and I'm hopeful that we can use that Sunday as a learning experience and, um, and we can do a better job of communicating together and, and really responding as fast as we can. Um, and the mayor's working on that with a team that will include Alabama Power, so that we can make sure that we are not endangering our citizens with downed power lines when they're trying to clear away debris and brush. So thank you, Mayor and team, John Moore. Thank you for the call. Thanks for taking all of my photographs of District Six and relaying all of those down trees. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just want to thank all the, uh, everybody in District Seven for being patient after the storm, and, uh, we're still working on cleanup, but we're getting there. Public Works is doing a good job. Also, want to reiterate, uh, Councilwoman Wilson, I do think that's the first time, I didn't get to see it live, I watched it on our Facebook Live, or it was Facebook Live, but I watched it a little later, a delay. The fireworks show, but the Edward Patriot Association, I think they came real close because no negativity that I saw. So it was first time ever on that. Uh, and, uh, just every, it's already been said, so I'm not going to repeat what everybody's said, but thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I want to reiterate, I want to thank, uh, the mayor and his administration team and our first responders, uh, for the response that they did and how they were organized in, uh, in this past Sunday's weather event. It was, uh, goes without saying, it was a outstanding response, and, uh, it sounds like it's going to be even better with the, uh, action meetings that are, that are taking place. So I'm, uh, very grateful for the leadership from the mayor's office in, in that regard. You heard us talk about, uh, the grant today, the E S G grant for two hundred thousand dollars. It's a federal matching grant to address homelessness, uh, because we have a problem in Gaston with our homeless people. And so as Tina King said last week in our meeting, you know, the city's going to approach this, but with compassion. So this program, uh, is going to help with the whole, to address the, the whole person that is homeless, not just to feed them or to give them a jacket, but to help them in any area that they need, whether it be mental health assistance, or whether it be jobs, housing, affordable housing. The program that's in place at Salvation Army addresses those things, and also at the Family Success Center. So those organizations are longstanding organizations that have a proven track record, and, uh, it's going to be exciting to see what kind of an impact that can make in our, in our community. Also want to thank the Patriots Association. Every July fourth, they just out, outdo themselves. Last night was no exception, and, uh, make sure, give the mayor credit also, he contributed five thousand dollars out of his discretionary fund to, uh, add extra minutes to the fireworks program. So the extra bit of time that we got to have, uh, was, uh, I think, very, uh, very nice. I heard a lot of great comments last night as I was leaving. And, uh, on the water issue, uh, I'm, I'm one of the council members that served on the Gaston Water Works and Sewer Board. I've served for two months, so I, I don't have a lot of empirical knowledge about that. Uh, I, I just know that there's a lot of, of smart engineers, a lot of people doing a lot of good things. I appreciate Councilman Wilson reading the information off the insert in the monthly water bill, and encourage people to come to those meetings. And, uh, mayor, I guess, did not make it back in time. He's in an interview upstairs, and so with that, we will be adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.